Okay. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Bucky Stoudamire isn't here today, and so I'm going to ask Ms. Thompson to call the roll.
Ms. Albright?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mr. Jerick?
Here.
Mrs. Leonie?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Scott? Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Okay, procedures for public participation. Prepared statements that are to be read to the board should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. All right, and this is the committee of the whole. This meeting will be followed by a special voting meeting. Announcements, there are no agenda edits to the committee of the whole.
There are none.
And we do have a superintendent's report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few items. The return from winter break last week, had the opportunity to visit each of our district buildings, speak with our students and staff upon their return, and many reported excitement in returning and continuing with the school year, having had the opportunity to spend some time with, some extended time with family and friends over the break. Wednesday, the 18th, which is right around the corner, marks our first day of the second semester of the school year, as hard as it is to believe that we're approaching the midway point rather quickly. And the last item is, our Office of Professional Learning continues to work in finalizing our in-service day that is scheduled for Monday, the 23rd, which is a week from, or two weeks from today, of in-service for continuing learning with an agenda being finalized with our principals, directors, and our instructional learning coaches. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Cooper. Any comments, questions from the board for Dr. Cooper right now? We have our student board representative report. Ms. Sheppow, Ms. Breeze, and Mr. Buckwalton. I don't know who's talking first.
Okay, so for the high school, for academically, we are wrapping up quarter two with midterms. For extracurriculars, the high school is bringing back Mr. Boone, and this week is Bible Week to raise money for the school and for Mr. Boone.
For the middle school, academics, students have been joining the discussion of podcasts and growing some discernment curriculum. Extracurriculars, hosting chorus and band adventure concerts prior to holiday break, and cultural, health spirit week on the week before break, and had an after-school winter dance to celebrate the holidays prior to the break.
The AIC, academically, the fourth and secondary took turns reading one another. Extracurricular, the whole school made Christmas cards for the elderly. The cultural, the AIC created the kind of squad to study inclusion. And for the ABC, academically, students took their math test, their math tests and reading and math to track their progress. Extracurricularly, in music, each class had Christmas songs sing along. And culturally, employees so unified came to the PC to donate to schools for charity. Any more?
All right, thank you, guys. And I heard rumors that this is, that we're at the end of the class quarter, so if you guys wanted to take off today, maybe your experience would be wonderful. Thank you all.
Student government thing?
Do you want to move it up to the back?
Yeah.
Okay. We also have the student government report. You were going to be like way down the list, but I figured you probably want to go first. It should be.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Massingill, and I am the president of the high school student government. We are here tonight to present our semi-annual report. So below is the summary of the year's past and future accomplishments and activities of our student government. We would first like to thank those who made these events possible. We'd like to thank our administration at the high school and the district levels for being supportive and helpful. Thank you to school board for always trying to put the needs of our students first. We would like to thank our high school staff for helping us create a safe and enjoyable school year. So our homecoming this year was very successful. We had our Spirit Week and our Heart of a Bonfire. I would like to say a special thank you to Dr. Cooper for her support of the bonfire. Our homecoming dance was very successful and had the largest attending homecoming in the recent history. Our blood drive had 20, 52 student appointments and 65 adult appointments on December 20th. We had our sad club Spirit Week, and our band and choir performed their winter concerts in December. Our unified bachelors are planning their future district-wide community days, and we had a very successful celebration of becoming a nationally unified champion school. In the future, we're looking into joining the Pennsylvania Association of Student Councils, and we hope to do so by the conclusion of the school year. We are coordinating with the district for our winter and spring spirit events, and we're hoping to pull them off the same way as we did in previous years. We are planning our district-wide food drive alongside helping harvest, and we're hoping to get a lot of community participation. And then we're excited for our elections for next year's candidates and our scholarship recipients election. I look forward to speaking with you all again in our spring report on the future events that we list before and the form of our plans for the school year for 2023 and 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you both. Moving on to finance. Three items under finance. Anybody have, anybody from the board have any comments, questions, concerns on finance items? Any comments from the public? Programs, just one overnight trip? Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Any public comment? Retirements, under personnel, just, we have a few appointments. No names yet, but except, oh, we have, we have one under extracurricular, but the two teaching positions, we hope to have names in those by the time we vote for them. Any comments, questions, concerns for the, for the administration on that? Any public comment? Presentations by board members. Mr. Scott is not here. He told me he had no correspondence to notify anybody of, so, Mr. Jerick for BCIU?
There was maybe need to assemble our faculty in general.
Okay, thank you. Burke's, Burke's career in technology, Ms. Thompson?
I was unable to make the December meeting. I don't have a meeting minute.
Okay, was there a meeting in January?
There is one. I think it's the third week.
Okay. All right. Legislative report, Mr. Strobel? Legislative report.
We didn't have a meeting.
Okay, is there one coming up in January, or is it, is it quarterly?
The next one, the meeting is in February.
Okay. Any other reports? Any public comments on board reports? Enrollment statistics, number six. Any comments, questions, concerns for the administration from the board? Any public comment? Curriculum instruction? Ms. Albright?
We had an instructional coaching update, in which I brought social studies research.
Okay, next meeting is scheduled for the 23rd. Any, any comments or questions from the board for Ms. Albright? Any public comment? Extracurricular, Ms. Bell?
We have, we did not have a meeting.
Oh, that's right. So is that the end of the month, or is it?
It was the February 23rd.
So it'll be February 6th is the next one? Okay. Any public comment on that? Facilities, transportation?
I don't think I was there for the last meeting.
I don't think you were.
I think I was in California. I'm looking at my notes, and they're like empty cells.
Yeah. Give me one second. Pull them up. Sorry. There we go. That's November.
Yeah, we, I don't think we had one in, we didn't have one in January.
Okay, we didn't have one. We didn't have one. We didn't have one in December.
December 2nd.
That's right. Okay, so the next meeting will be, that's February 6th. Any public comment on that? Finance, we also did not have a meeting. Oh, we did have one in September, on December 19th? Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, we discussed the audit.
We discussed, oh, we discussed the audit, which we'll be voting on during the special voting meeting today. We talked about, it's been several years since students have actually had to pay for lunch because of COVID. We, we had free lunches for several years. The, the problem of negatives, negative balances in school lunch accounts has recur, has, has resurfaced, so we're going to be keeping an eye on that. Talked about the BCIU transition house lease, and that it has not been updated or changed, the amount of it has not changed in 10 years, at least. We are going to look into renegotiating that lease when it's, when it comes up. And that was what we talked about. We also had a budget meeting. We had a budget meeting last Thursday. It was our, it was a very preliminary budget meeting. And one of the things that we will be voting on next voting meeting, is that correct? At the end of the month?
This voting meeting.
One of the things we will be voting on this month is to vote on the expedited track for approving our budget, where we don't have as many interim steps. If we do that, we, we, the administration's recommendation was that they think that we can do that, since currently the Act One index is very high, our adjusted Act One index is 5.3? 5.3. So as long as we promise not to raise taxes any higher than that, which I don't, we've never, in the time I've been on the board, raised taxes that high in one year, that we can jump through a few, fewer hoops on the state level. So that will be a resolution that we will be voting on at the, in the special voting meeting after this meeting. So those are the two things under finance. The next finance meeting is January 23rd. Any questions on, on that? Especially on the, on the resolution, if that, if that, I, I think everybody here, except for Mr. Rittenhouse, was, was here last year when we met, we signed, we signed a similar resolution, so for everybody else, that should probably make some sense. Any public comment? Policy, Mr. Scott is not, not here, Mr. Hurley? Do you have his one?
There was no meeting.
Oh, okay. All right, and the next meeting will be February 6th. Any public comment on policy? Technology, there was no meeting as well. December. January 23rd is our next meeting. Any, any public comment on that? Yep, go ahead.
Shane Rockel, H3D, Gattanburg. With the technology department, I've brought this up a couple times about the iPads, when they are finished with the school district. It's just the bare minimum amount to pay to keep it. And I want to know if there's any, has there been any discussion on the next time the iPads are up, if we are going to keep them? Because it seems it's like between a $10,000 and $15,000 loss that we could be recruiting to use towards technology, if they were to be sold, or if they could be donated to kids who need them.
I think it's a trade-in, because we take early out the lease typically, and even if we did take them to lease end and buy them for the dollar, we can't sell them because we're a school, so it's not something we can do. We can't even obtain it.
So...
But the off-the-lease piece of it does reduce our bill for the next ones coming in.
By how much?
I've been telling you, not, I'm untrue, but I gave you the number. Well, we can get that number from Scott for you.
Because I know...
It was a fair amount, because I know the last time we did it, our payment was actually the last for the next cycle of them versus the first payment, so.
Why isn't the school district allowed to sell them? Because I know they did something similar with the, with the band instruments.
Has to do with tax. Maybe some of the kids want to buy them, you know, that reduce rate or something. You just can't do it.
So how do they do that when the music department switched over all their music instruments?
They did it through the boosters.
Okay, so there's a way you can do it. Right?
We don't have a technology boosters program. Yeah, I mean, no, but I, but I hear what you're saying, and it's, yeah.
To look into, because, you know, when my daughter went to college, she had to buy a new one. It was $800.
Yeah.
One similar to hers that she gave up was between $400 and $500 used, and you're talking a dollar, or just say they even give you 50 or 75, it's still a huge...
Yeah.
Also, there's lots of kids that can use the technology to go on to the next step, if they don't have the funds to do it.
It would just be post judge grade graduation here, because all the kids that come here get them. So they're provided to all the children here now.
Right.
Not something that would, so it'd be post-graduation would be the only segment that works for it. But I think it's a good question, and I'll ask Scott what our trade-in and value was there versus what the actual value would be. And then two, what the effort would take to try and get them to a booster, to get them to a thing, to be able to sell them, then how many people would want them, and how many would they want, how many can you get left over? And so there's got to be, somebody's got to sit down and figure out what the wash is going to be on that, but it's a, it's a good question.
Yeah, and, and I do believe the taxpayers would be okay if they went to a good home versus taking a minimum amount. If you, if you decide you can't sell them, or it's too difficult for the administration to go through that process?
I don't remember the exact amount, but the last time we did this, I do remember that the next segment that we got was greatly reduced, would have, would have been had we not had the trade-in, so we're reinvesting.
It would be nice to know that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Any other public comment on technology? Old business, the meeting minutes, anybody have any questions, comments from the board on that? Any public comment? New business, we have nothing, but any public comment?
On new business?
Okay, hearing none. Presentations by public, by the public on issues? Okay, I'm going to allow it, but normally...
Prior rules of...
It's, 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 yeah, you, it's fine. It's fine, go ahead.
My question is, with the, with the school district offering to pay for the sewer, for the development going in over in Douglasville?
It's with our lawyers.
Has there been any more progress with that, or any...
It's with our, it's with our lawyers. It's not dead, you know, but it's with our, it's with our lawyers and their lawyers.
There's actually, there's actually an engagement coming up with Ms. Thompson and myself, with township and some representatives from the county on the 24th, I believe it is, of January.
Yeah, so we just don't have, I don't have...
Will that be open to the public, or is that just like a...
It's, it's just the, the committee meeting, there's nothing being decided at that point. Anything that the, the district decides would have to be approved by the board if they're going to follow some money in that direction.
Yeah, any, anything that gets decided would have to be a public meeting here, and a public meeting with, with township, and probably, it's possible with the county if they're also signing on, because their economic development is involved as well. But yeah, there's not, nothing to say at the moment.
And comes with strong advisement from our solicitor.
Is your, your solicitor who's giving the strong advisement, is he familiar with this kind of law?
He is.
Or do you have the school districts? Did you hire a, a separate?
No, he's our, he's our solicitor, Mr. Subers. He's familiar with it.
Okay, well, you know, there's divorce attorneys, there's finance attorneys. I really suggest you look into getting someone who does development rights and stuff like that, and not just a school solicitor, because you get the, the person who's arguing this, and they don't have all the right information, you can find yourself in a bind. Where do you use, you know, someone who's familiar with this kind of procedure? They know the problems to look for, they know the questions to ask, and they will work the best contract for you guys. Your school solicitor, I would not recommend using that.
Thank you.
And nothing against your school solicitor. He does school law. I think you need to find someone in land development, or some, someone who's familiar with that kind of procedure that you guys are going to think about doing.
Thank you. Hi?
Hi. Happy New Year. So this is talk of anything, right?
Mm-hmm.
I would really like to know if we can look into something for mental health for kids. Since COVID happened, I know a lot of kids. I, I mean, on my street, they call me the daycare mom. They send me all over, send all kids over. They play at my house. But I know mental health issues are at a high rise right now. Kids don't want to talk about it, because they feel they are going to be rejected, or they're not normal. I think it should be aware in the schools. Definitely, I think that's something that we shall look into for sake of all of our kids in this district. Definitely, I think it would be a good investment. If we can ditch out money here and there, give bonuses, we can look into the health, mental health of our kids.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. Okay. Quick question. This is for our musicals. They could be, you know, across the board, here, high school, middle school, wherever musicals are being done. What are the protocols in getting that budget established? What, what's the criteria in making parent involvement or raise money? Like where does that cross the line? Does it cross the line of, you know, how money is received? What, what jail does that go into? And it, I don't believe it was discussed in the most recent budget conversation, but is there, is there a way we can discuss this in the future? I believe the middle school may be having some difficulty possibly funding some of the props needed for the middle school musical, and I really would like to see some support there in money allocated for these students. They're really excited about it. I offered to really host and run an entire fundraiser, donated by myself, a couple of other parents, local organizations to donate, to help raise money, but I'm really concerned about the sets, about costumes, what does that require? I know there's usually like directors, there's usually like choreographers. Was that taken into consideration when this rolled out? Just out of curiosity? And is that something we could then implement in future budgets to go ahead and make sure that things are properly funded and so that there could be a pretty decent production? Pottstown or Pottsboro, their production, it was a pretty hefty budget, the evening of the week last year, I think it was close to $20,000. And I'm not sure what Daniel Boone allocated for the high school musical junior this year. Not that, you know, I need to hear those numbers, but I just keep thinking that we're going to have a good production. I would like Daniel Boone to be known for his production, for his students and their talent, and bring people to our community, and I'd like to see there would be a really decent production.
Thank you.
Happy New Year. This is a questionnaire that I think went way above the line. And number one question is, what events would you consider as most important events that are needed before you engage in any type of sexual behavior? Why did you choose these events? Question number two, what could happen to your health triangle if you choose to engage in sexual intercourse before you had anticipated, regardless of pregnancy, non-pregnancy, physical, mental, emotional, social? What could happen to your timeline if you choose to engage in sexual intercourse before you had anticipated and ended up getting pregnant, getting someone pregnant? What are steps you can take to ensure you maintain your timeline and to ensure a healthy ideal, best, no regrets, joy-filled, and lifelong romantic relationship? And then the second page has gone through whatever the students can put for this question. Directions, you are determined the timeline of your healthy ideal, best, no regrets, joy-filled, and lifelong romantic relationship. And then it says developing relationships. This questionnaire totally crossed the line. So the next questionnaire that could come out is, well, okay, you had this joyful sexual relationship, and now this is how you go get an abortion. This totally crosses the line. This is parent stuff. This isn't the school. Great, health classes, okay, this is your, this is your body parts or whatever. This crosses the line. And I'm not sure if y'all are aware that this questionnaire was given out to juniors and seniors, but this happened in our school. So, you know, I just want you aware, this garbage is being taught in our school. So, thank you, and I'd like to donate two batteries to change my clock.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, can I get a motion to adjourn the... Oh, I apologize. I apologize.
Okay, my name is Valerie. I'm from Weaver Town. I just have two questions. As of October 31st, Chrysler's put into breach of contract. Have we been getting, I mean, have we fined them or anything for being in breach of contract? I'd just like an answer, but I will put my email down here, because I'd like an answer on the email. Also, have you requested copies of bus rosters at all, for any of the bus runs? There are 85-plus students on a bus roster. The problem with that is, first off, a bus only seat, second, two children, and that's three receipt. Middle school and high school, you're not going to get three receipt. High school, they don't ride. Middle school, they do. I just, when are they going to add buses? I mean, I've heard in the last meeting how somebody's kid sat three receipt through their... how somebody's kid sat three receipt through their school year. And that is like apples to oranges. Because if we would have been allowed to add more buses, your children would have sat three receipt. This is different. They don't have the buses. They're not running what they're supposed to be running. When I sat in the zoning meeting, they were asking for a total of 43 units for parking. They're supposed to have 65. So where are all these students? How are they getting to school? Unless you all found it on their parents taking them. So what if they pipe burst in the middle school or elementary? And mommy and daddy can't come from Kaya Prost and pick their kid up? Now they'll have to ride over on the buses. Where are they getting the seat? It'll be standing room. And who's responsible for that? If that bus gets in an accident? Those are my two questions. Oh, and the other question was, and it's down the lane. I don't know. But apparently there is a spare bus sent out this past week with only three seat belts that worked in this bus. The rest of them were busted. And they also have another bus sitting up at the middle school that from doing busing for as long as I have, I can tell that body style is either 2009 or 2010. They are required to have no more than 10 years on a bus. So who, who's polices? What comes in here from Potsdam? Thank you.
Are they, are they still parked at the middle school?
Yes, they are.
I also know mom, she completely. Can I make a comment to the buses as well? As a personal parent of a child who rides on the bus, I've had to keep up with the buses because initially, our children on my son's classroom on the bus for over two hours. Worked it out, got it taken care of. Then they changed the schedule, but didn't tell anybody on the way home. And twice now, they have been picking up at a different school without notifying the parents that there is a time change to their children coming home. I wasn't aware of it because obviously, I'm not home in time, but other parents on the bus have. And I've had to keep calling and getting them to take. They're sitting at other schools for 30 minutes waiting for another student or students. And I have to keep on them to not do that. So it does seem like they don't have enough drivers or enough buses or something like that, and it's at the expense of the children in our district.
How long are they going to park at the middle school?
I don't know why they're not paying.
No, because, no, I've asked this before. It's not a secret. I've asked it before, but we keep saying that they're, you know, they're leasing something, they're getting something, they're getting something. Seriously, how long?
They are, but they've run in some challenges with zoning of the property they're looking to lease.
They withdrew it because they went in without a plan, and Andy kicked them out. Cooper went in with them, so he can tell you.
Who's Cooper?
You?
Oh, okay.
Anybody else?
I just don't understand why they're not paying rent to the school. You guys are all about saving money for the kids. If they're taking up parking here at high school, middle school, and this company was supposed to be cheaper, and you're all about saving money, why aren't you charging them rent to park until they finally get?
Would you like to add that to the questions that you asked when you had your three minutes?
Sure.
No, you've had your three minutes, so you want me to add that to that?
So I'll do a public comment then.
That's fine. I will, I will add that to the list.
When I talk to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?